Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, Noel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You... Can you hear us Denise?
I can. Good morning.
Good morning. Alright, well we'll be to you there here in a couple of minutes. We have a couple of details we have to do here, so look.
Good morning, no problem.
Call the meeting to order. Look for approval of the agenda.
The additions are correct. That's motion to approve.
We have a motion to...
I'll hold a second.
And a second to approve the agenda is printed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the minutes were fairly...
Well.
Long and lengthy.
I will say that as long as all of the, uh, technicality stuff from precinct to salaries and everything else is correct, which I believe that it is, uh, everything else we did, it looks correct to me, so I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Um, I read through them as well. I didn't see anything, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. General public concerns.
Looking at me, bro?
Well.
You're the only one here. We don't have anyone else but in public.
Well, I'd like to say, I'm at the last meeting, I'm here obviously about the river and the dam. Say thank you to the board for two years ago out there. You guys, I really appreciate your open minds and, um, asking a lot of good questions and really taking it... I really feel like you're taking it into full consideration of how to best handle this, so thank you. I know there's some stuff in the paper, some facts, some rebuttals and some stuff, and in fact, right now, um... I don't know how to say it, but there's a couple of questions I have. One, I'd like to see, nobody's ever seen the results of the first survey, you know? You know, you could pick option one, two, or three. And I've asked for the results from the conservation, nobody will give you the numbers. Obviously, number one, the most expensive one, was the first pick, because a lot of people emailed us and called us and asked, "Which one do I choose?", because the main objective was to keep the pool of water as it... As close to as is as possible. So I've never s... I don't know if you guys have that, or is there a way to get that number, the result of that, uh, survey?
I thought we had it, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
I've never seen the...
I mean, I... I can look through my...
I don't know, we think we did see it at some point in time when they sent that out. I can't imagine the Conservation Commission does not have that.
They do, but they just... It's like top secret, you can't...
Okay, well then, uh, we'll get you a copy.
We'll get you a copy.
I would just like the whole result of that.
I think it... Well, you take a look at it.
Yeah, I don't...
And then again, remember, that's a survey. That's...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a survey. It's kinda like a poll.
Yeah.
You know, it's who you ask.
That's right.
Yeah. And I don't think they asked every last citizen of the county. No, no. It was good information.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, the main thing that I'm here for is, I don't think they're giving... You know, everybody wants to go back to the conservation board, I'm really disappointed now. Because it came right from some members that they're tired of dealing with and just want to pick option two and go on down the road. Now with you guys digging in, trying to find some money from, you know, get some of this money from the state, well now, oh, let's just go for option one. But then TC Loving tells, "Todd, don't spend too much time looking for money." It's like, wait a minute, or, you know, on this project, it's like, wait a minute, there's money there. You should be spending a ton of time on it, you know, trying to get all the free money you can. And along with the fact that at the last meeting in the paper that somebody told crime break, "Don't give those guys any money for the dam." I don't know who that citizen was. It's really disappointing, no matter how we fix it, we don't need to be standing on the state center, "Don't help us get some funding", because I don't... If we end up at option two, we still need some funding.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever that citizen was, I'm really disappointed that they're saying, "Don't bring... Don't get some money for Humboldt County." That's really disappointing. And they have the right to say that, but... Um, there's a couple of things, you know, I've got into it. A disagreement with them about the siltation and stuff. And, um, I went down, and I invited all you guys to, you guys and gals, to go down to the, uh, Summer Bridge. Just walk out on there and look at that sandbar. When they say that silt won't go through gates and Stan Tech says they're a port, you can't... Because they're telling, you know, they're off tape and all those guys are like, "Oh, the gates aren't going to do anything." Well, the mill race opened up and all that water and sand came through the mill race, and that's a really tiny gate. Came through there and that's how that sandbar is created on there. You know, when it comes out behind the, on the backside of the river. So I think it's a good exercise, it's simple, just go down there, walk out on the bridge and look at that sandbar that came out through the mill race. And we've had a couple, when I had the lawsuit, um, a couple of conservation members said they don't know where that sand came from in deposition. It's like, alright, why are they so against us? I don't know. You know, it's just disheartening. We gotta do something to fix it, nobody's done anything, and they just want to throw their hands in there and say, "Let's take this option and move on." It's not the best option. The city was, that night, was terribly disappointed in the fact that they were just going to shut down the mill race and they used it to drain the brand new motel. And I think they said another side street drains into that mill race too, so there's some other things. Then they say, "Well, there's money in there for, you know, filling the fish ponds. They're going to put some drains in there, but, you know, that's not part of the cost." Or pumps to pump water to it. So there's, you know, I don't want to get into the he said, she said thing. Um, what... I just would ask for your patience. You guys have been really patient so far, but there's actually, um, forming a group, like the boat club we had, so it's not just me fighting, because it's not just about me, I'm just trying to keep the thing alive. Um, they're putting together a website and they've got lots of people, they're going to get on it and they're going to put together a group of concerned citizens that want to fix up the dam the way it is. You know, it's pretty hard for Stan Tech to say, and those guys to sit there and say, "There's no core drilling's done. Stan Tech has done nothing but say there's some surface deterioration." And in fact, I don't think most people know that they say, "Well, the dam's a hundred years old, it got washed out." The dam didn't wash out, that was a... If everybody remembers, that was an island. That was a dirt island washed out. That's damn, and Mary Meider said that they checked and that's a solid cement dam. And on top of it, everybody that, you know, option two and three, they're going to cut down the dam and use it for a base. And we all know, when you're building a building... When you're building a building or a house or something, the most important thing is your foundation. So obviously, that, they feel like that base is there. If that dam, if we put rocks behind it to stop the undertow and put new gates and overmire bladders on top to build that pool back up where we're licensed to do it, we'll have a great asset for Humboldt. And that's what I've been fighting for all along. You know, if they want to talk about canoeing and kayaking, we're fortunate, we got the East River over here. Let's go, let's go make that our canoeing and kayaking spot, or down below the dam. And then maintain the pool of water above it, and that's all I ask of you guys, is like, we can have the best of all worlds because we got East and West Fork Gold. We don't need to cut down to make canoeing and kayaking spot out of it. So, thank you for your patience and time and listening to us, just keep blowing on, but I'm sorry.
Well, I guess that's why we're here and we're hopefully trying to figure out the best of both worlds for it. And I guess as we move forward, we're hopefully going to come to some type of...
And I say the best thing is for your organization is to talk to the politicians, because they're the ones that are going to decide whether we get any money or not. So I was...
Well, I was here a year ago, I told you guys, you know, my dream was to have great bike trails and get the pool fixed and above, you know, because, you know, like we've talked, we've all talked about it. Where's all the recreation? Like in northeast Iowa, through COVID. They were packed up there with people, because they had so much recreation. We have great campgrounds, they're all on the river, and we got great bike trails, you know, the base is there for some really great bike trails. So between the biking, canoeing, kayaking, fishing, boating, camping, bird watching, whatever, we've got all the assets here because we've got the natural assets. So let's not destroy the boating part of it, you know, that's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm after. Because like I told you guys before, look at Lake Ternadia, Twin Lakes, Clear Lake, Okabogi, Spirit Lake, Five Islands. All those, they're jammed every weekend with people. So you want to bring people to Humboldt, and for our quality of life for living here, why not have the best of all worlds? Because I can, you know, and what work that I did do, getting, uh, new gates built and new flashboards, like I told you guys, was under a million five. So all we have to do from there is cut out the old gates and put this, do this network and then have this stuff installed. So I am very confident, not, I don't know about the rock below the dam to stop the undertow, I don't have a price on that. But besides that, it's easily going to be way cheaper than option two. And we keep the mill race, you know, by doing that that way, we keep the boating. The core, I remember when the Corps of Engineers studied it, it's twelve to fourteen foot limestone base above the dam, deep. So in their study in number two, they want to dredge it down to five foot deep. Well, if you dredge it five foot deep right above the dam, how far upstream have you got to go till you're going to be in two foot of water? You know? And then, and then the conservation board went and drilled some holes in the ice. I don't know how far above the dam they went, they did say that there was, that they said, "Bret, there's not the channel you think there is", but there's still a channel. And I don't even know if they opened those gates last year for the low water. If they didn't open those gates, it's going to fill in right above there. And Ron Warren, he'll come here and say, he knows more about riverbank restoration and everything else than everybody. He's done a ton of it. He says the water is over six foot deep, there's a channel out by his place, it's over six foot deep, and they sit there and just... No, I doubt it, I don't believe you. It just came from the guy that lives there somewhere. I just think there's some undertow on the conservation board that, uh, needs to be addressed to open both eyes and let's look at this with both eyes wide open and whatever we come up with, come up with.
Alright, well, we appreciate your time.
I think we need to get ahold of everybody we can talk to, call the car and bring confection, there are our percentages right now. Call them and get the word in there so some of that money in the mine can come this way and stay in all of the mine.
Right. Alright, moving on, Denise? I thought, uh, when I heard you were coming and then there was a slight chance of snow, I was nervous.
Well, I, today I wasn't, at least I wasn't aware of the situation there personally, but I, uh... I just, I talked to Trish last week, it was just seeing how things were going relative to your conversation about rate setting. Um, I am, you know, wanting to get some good information, like to come into employee meetings and so forth. Uh, so we thought we would, it might be suggested to have another chat with the board, uh, prior to getting that scheduled so we could iron out the rates for next year. Um, so if I could get authority on Zoom so I can share my screen, or if you guys have it in front of you, um, we can go over the, well, whatever...
Is this, is this what she's talking about, what we have furnished here?
Thanks, Ben. Glad to have you, it's fun to see you. Alright, I'm good.
You can share now?
Yep.
Good.
Okay. Okay, so this is, uh, this is actually just page twelve out of the last, uh, renewal package that I went over with you a few weeks ago. So, you know, typically I come in with one renewal and, um, actually that renewal looks like this. This is the renewal, and Humboldt County were to just renew as this, uh, and made no changes to their, uh, their partial self-funding, which is historically what we do. Uh, if you were to do that, that would reflect a four point nine three percent rate increase over today's, today's rate. And of the, um, of the new, uh, benefit costs, this one point four million dollars, fifty thousand of that would go into your partial self-fund to pay your claims that are self-funded. With that said, last time we spoke, I quickly got you to page twelve because, um, you're really in a position where you need to increase your partial self-funding. You've had a few high years of claims on your partial self-funded side of your plan and your reserve is running low. So I mean, there's a lot of information on this page, but I wanted it all on one page because I thought that it would be the easiest for you to be able to, uh, take a look at a glance. So this is just, this is through January. I did go look, um, I did receive February reporting, so since then, you have added a few thousand dollars to your reserve account. So that's actually up to about seventy thousand dollars. So that's good, because what that shows me is that February claims came down. Um, you were at, you know, I think in December you were around twenty-two thousand, and then January you were at like thirteen thousand, and now in February you're seven, so your claims are moving in the right direction, uh, but still you just have a seventy thousand dollar reserve balance. If you come all the way down to the bottom left on the page, you'll see your utilization. So if you look at a three-year claims average, that said, you're having a high year this year, but your three-year claims average is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So what that means is, you need to put enough money into your account to pick, to cover those claims. And if you don't, we'll take from the seventy thousand dollar reserve balance. So when we look at renewal options, the first option here is your renewal, that's the four point nine three. If you, or four point, yeah, nine three, if you did that renewal, if you, if you took that renewal, you would take, or you would need ninety thousand dollars out of your reserve, and you don't have ninety thousand, you have seventy thousand. So that's not going to work. Okay, so then we look at your option two, which would reflect a six percent renewal. If you did a six percent renewal, that would require about seventy-six thousand dollars out of your reserve. Seven percent would be sixty-two, and eight percent would be forty-nine. So that's, that's with, uh, in each of these scenarios, you're putting new money in, but you're not putting enough new money in to cover your three-year average. So if you did, let's say, a seven percent renewal, you can follow this up and you can see that the funding that would be built into your premium, the amount of money that you would be putting in to pay your claims, new money, would be, I'm sorry, seventy-seven thousand dollars is what you would be putting in of new money. So that's enough to cover your claims and you would still have, um, you know, a little bit of money left in your reserve. So the seven percent renewal, really where I'm angling, is that you take about a seven percent renewal. Um, you know, if you budgeted enough, or you have enough to go up to eight percent, then that could, you know, that would be great. The last time we talked, you were going to go back to your, uh, your budget to let me know what you did budgeted, because I think there was some, um, I think, I think we were unsure what that number was, so... So with that said, I'll stop it and let you guys tell me what you're thinking.
What did we come up with for that Denise's comment and discussion? What did we budget?
Budgeted for seven.
Seven?
So Denise, would that seventy-seven, two eighty, would that be added to the seventy roughly that we have now? So after roughly a year, we'd have a hundred and forty-seven?
Yes, that would be added to the reserve, but you need, but you're going to have claims in there.
So we're going to have average of sixty-two thousand coming out?
Right, but I'm just trying to figure out what the number is that goes with, uh, seventy thousand up above, so I'm...
Yeah, that'd be the number that goes with...
That would be the number we would have to add to it, so to cover our claims that we could potentially need to pay for, right?
No. Well, the way I'm looking at it is, uh, if you're, if you're estimating sixty-two thousand in, in claims expenditure, your net increase is going to be, what, fifteen thousand a year? If we do a seven percent?
True, I guess you look at that way.
Am I right, Denise?
Can you repeat it one more time?
So if you're looking at the seven percent slide, uh, which shows funding built up at seventy-seven thousand, but your expenditures are sixty-two, our self-funding will go up fifteen thousand a year?
Oh, no. So the, the seventy-seven, the seventy-seven thousand is the amount of new money that would be built into the premiums to cover claims. So in other words, you could say, we have seventy-seven thousand dollars of new money that's going to be added to our current fund balance of seventy thousand dollars. Okay, so those two numbers together is all the money that you're going to have to pay for your claims, right? On average, you use about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
So it's really going to be tight?
It's going to be tight, seven percent. I mean, you're going to have, you're going to have some money left over, but I'm also, no, I'm also hoping that your claims continue to trend down, uh, because you can see, look, in two thousand nineteen, twenty plan year, you used that fifteen percent or a hundred and nine thousand. Jump up to current and you're using it almost twenty-three percent or a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So you're in an unusually high claims year, and every group goes through this, every, you know, five, seven years or so, you're going to have that. But those, that, um, that high claims year has eroded your reserve. So, yeah, I mean, you're going to, it's going to be tight. Almost COVID continues, don't you think we're going to be continuing on that upward trend? If there's another surge? Um, your plan wasn't, our G H C P in general, we had, um, so we had a couple, I think two or three pretty significant COVID claims, but, but the actual COVID itself hasn't caused a big uptick in our claims, um, but the delay of services has. So in other words, if you go back to this nineteen, twenty plan year, when medical services were delayed, so we couldn't go get a lot of the services that maybe are not emergent but are scheduled, so maybe a knee replacement or hip replacement, you know, things like that were delayed. Um, care was delayed, and that delay then has increased the current utilization, because now everybody that's paying is going in to get those services done. So that whole cycle could repeat itself again, uh, you know, definitely. I, it's almost impossible to, uh, predict the impact of, of a new COVID strain. Trish, do we have it in our budget to be able to do eight percent? And a small cushion?
Uh, I'm not sure about that, I know it's budgeted for seven.
Here's, here's the thing to keep in mind, and this is very important. So remember, anything that you do relative to your rate increase that's above the four point nine eight is all just county money that stays with the county. It doesn't go anywhere. It, it's, it's your money, it's your reserve, if you don't use it for claims, you keep it.
It stays with us?
Yes.
We're not spending it if we're not using it, that's the thing. It's just shifting it from one channel to the other.
But if you know you have it in there, then you got to come up with it someplace else.
Exactly, that's hard, that's hard for, you know, for me to have to come mid-year and say, "We're out of money, you know, budgets are done and certify that, that's hard, I get it." But I, but I, but I wanted to make that...
But the other trace is, if you run out, you're going to have to come up with the money to. You're going to have to pull it from somewhere.
She didn't hear you?
I said it also, if our self-funding runs out, we're going to have to fund it from somewhere.
Oh, yeah. Yes?
So I guess I would at least go seven, if not the eight.
I mean, we're just, it's short, under five is more of a status quo. So you're increasing your, your two percent increase is all self-funded money. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so if you look at the page that you all have in front of you, this is page twelve that I have on the screen, see the insurance company premium here? Follow that all the way, so you can see, we're not changing the amount we're sending to well funds, that's all staying the same. We're not changing any of your fees, that's all staying the same regardless of what renewal you take. So the only thing that's changing is this gold line here, which is all county money owned and sold by the county. You don't use it, you don't, you don't lose it. But if we put it in there now, say, we have two good years of self-funding, then we can go back down to the smaller one. And that's what I would recommend, yeah. Yeah. So I think there's, my feeling is I would go up to eight, just give us a little more cushion so we don't have to, in the middle of the year, come up with more money, we have to.
How you feel about me ambling? It's just, you don't know. I mean, you look at previous historical, it's just, they put a discussion, uh, we've had unusually high claims. I like Denise's, uh, thought process, that the COVID claims weren't astronomical, but the fact that you couldn't get anything else done pushed it back. Yeah. And then it's catching up. Yeah. You know? Would we like to be cautious, optimistic that we're moving forward from that and you can do things on a normal scheduled basis? Then it shouldn't hopefully see this big influx. And, uh, you know, we're still remembering seven as an increase. And that's what we budgeted for, and, you know, if you were to go a paranoia, I mean, we could be putting in ten percent increase.
It's not, it's, hey, I'm not being paranoid.
No, I didn't mean that, Trish, but you don't, we don't know. I mean, we don't know.
No, we don't know, but why would we want to put ourselves in a bad situation later down the road? Where this is still our money and in a year, so we can lower it if we need to.
Well, stuff doesn't usually go down, but I just say on the flip side of that, uh, then you have to say that, you know, we don't know which, which way it's going to go and we budgeted seven to try to kind of keep our dollars spent in check moving forward.
I'm assuming.
Well, like I say, it's basically, if we run short, we're just going to have another meeting at some point and make a budget amendment to cover our self-funding, if we do run short.
Well, that's what Ben just asked. If we approved the budget last week at, at seven percent, are we going to have to sometime have an amendment?
Maybe later anyway.
To do eight percent, because it's going to cost us more to put it in there?
Mm-hmm.
So one way or another, we're going to either amend it?
Well, but it's the conjecture of, you know, seven percent is an increase of the self-funding.
No, I understand that. About eight percent is what she's asking. Do you want to put a little more cushion in it, or do you want to sit and beat this thing back and forth for an hour?
My point is, I think the seven percent is an increase and it's, it's livable. Well, I'll make a motion for a seven percent increase in the self-funding. I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion to, uh, go with the seven percent that we had in our budget, and we have a second. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close same sign? Seven percent it is.
Thanks Denise. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, I'll be in touch with the auditor's office so that we can start working on open enrollment.
Ben, when you come in, it's going to be warmer?
Yeah.
No snow, you keep it down there.
I know, I don't know what's going on down there.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye. Alright, seven percent it is.
Do I go back to one?
Uh, yep.
Alright, looks like Ben is up.
Morning.
Morning.
Got a couple items on the agenda today. Uh, first item is to approve for, for dust control from Wessels Oil.
Is this a new, are they a new business? And, or they've been in doing?
No, they've been, they've been in doing business, uh...
I didn't know they were in dust control.
Um, they do surrounding counties, uh, this would be the first time for us using them. They were the lone supplier that had lignin sulfate that we typically use for dust control. Um, basically, you guys have seen the lumber prices here lately. They're spending less time producing lignin, it's become harder to find. Uh, other counties are resulting with using magnesium chloride or calcium chloride. Last year, we did it with Pro Co-op, the first application was lignin and the second one was magnesium because they ran out of product. I guess it's my recommendation that we go with Wessels Oil and, and do the two applications of lignin sulfate.
And this is similar to what our quote's been the last few years, right?
Yeah, uh, last year I think it was a dollar fifteen a foot, so it went up just slightly.
Do you, I mean, per your explanation, you feel that lignin is a better dust control product than, uh, what, magnesium chloride?
I, I think they're both decent for, of blade operator's perspective, the lignin is a darker color. It's easier to notice when you're blading a road, you don't accidentally blade through the application.
Right.
Um, what we've run into in the past with people that have applied either calcium chloride or the magnesium chloride as our blade operator will blade right through it.
It doesn't show, it doesn't show up very well.
It doesn't, it, it just very slightly...
Color change. Probably over time that goes away too.
Right. And if the, if the landowner takes the flag out or marking the beginning and end station, it's.
All bets are off.
Yes.
Especially if you have a lot of rain.
Right.
Well, that seems to make a lot of sense and luckily it's not a whole lot more than last year. Oh, by the way, another question. Who did, who is the dust control with last, this past year?
Uh, last year was with Pro.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Last, I think three years I've been with Pro before that. It was Dino's.
Yeah, and who is the one, there's one person that does the different, is that Dino's?
They come in and do a couple.
One person that, that requests Dino's to come in and do theirs and we allow it. It's calcium chloride is what they use on their products.
They feel it's better. They get better results out of it, so.
Yep. Um, well, having as I said all that, I'll make the motion to go with Wessels Oil for the lignin dust control for this upcoming year.
All right. We have a motion?
Dave.
Dave, I'm sorry. I only had a moment.
I'm not on here.
My hearing aid isn't on or something. All right. We have a motion in a second to go with Wessels at a dollar twenty-five. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is a quote from Fort Dodge Asphalt to do a micro-surfacing, uh, on P sixty-three, which is a five-mile stretch of State Avenue north of Highway three and one hundred and sixty-fifth Street, which is the one-mile stretch running that diagonal northwest out of Bradgate. This is, this is similar to the application that they did south of Harcourt. If you guys have driven down, I don't know what county road that is off the top of my head, but.
I know exactly. I haven't gone a time thus far where they do that.
Down in the Green County.
Couple of years ago. It's, this past year, it's held up really well. Uh, it's really, really nice.
And it's basically what we're looking at is a ten-year fix for these two stretches.
Can you explain, like I said, yeah, thus far, what they did down in Green County, it's really worked well for them. Uh, so what, without getting overly technical, you said ten years, this versus, uh, the real redo of the road surface?
We've got like two hundred and ten miles of paved road throughout the county.
Right.
Uh, state funding gives us enough money to overlay three miles a year.
Right, but not that so much as the differential between this micro-surfacing versus if you were to go in and there is a difference between this and, uh,
This is about thirty thousand a mile. Right now asphalt's running about two hundred and fifty thousand a mile.
That's what I'm getting at. This is a.
Two hundred and fifty a mile.
Yeah, this is a.
Good Band-Aid.
It's a good Band-Aid.
It's a good Band-Aid. And I like your, uh, example in a different colony where they put it on. You're told about a ten-year and then after ten years on these roads, you're probably looking at a total resurfacing.
For State Avenue?
Yeah.
Yes, for one hundred and sixty.
Now, that's only, you said how long stretch was that mile?
That's a mile stretch. Pocahontas County removed the bridge that goes across the west branch.
So it's nothing.
It's a mile to nowhere. I mean, for P sixty-three, it's a Band-Aid. For one hundred and sixty-fifth, it's.
It should last a long time.
It should last a long time. There's very little.
Well, that's what I'm driving at. It, it isn't resurfacing, but it is a good, uh, time-gaining process for like State's Avenue.
It's delaying, uh, future maintenance.
Yep. Ten years would be wonderful.
Did they give you a timeline on this?
Uh, they said that they could get to it during this fiscal year because, as I've mentioned to you guys in the past, uh, we budgeted four hundred and seventy-five thousand in asphalt ma- uh, maintenance and repairs. We apparently spent fifty-six thousand. We have a agreement with Blacktop Service for roughly seventy thousand. We've got more than enough to cover this number.
So they honestly think they'll have it done pretty quick then, like May-June?
May-June is what they're looking for so we can get it paid for in June.
Perfect. And keep it this, yeah, like you said, this fiscal year that we're in. Well, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, appreciate the example. I'd make a motion for approval of the quote from Fort, Fort Dodge Asphalt for the micro-surfacing of P sixty-three and one sixty-fifth Street as stated.
All right. We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second for the quote from Fort Dodge Asphalt with hopefully a May-June completion. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
The third item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a quote from Dan Corbin Inc. to update the county GPS monumentation to the new twenty-twenty-two datum. Um, this was an item that was not in our budget. But the, the last time that they flew, that they flew these and that they, uh, took the time to set up the GPS monumentation triangulating the data for us back in twenty-eleven. We installed these monuments back in two thousand and six. They came in in eleven and repaired a couple that had been removed or damaged and re-triangulated everything. Basically, GPS is all about the, the curvature of the earth and, uh, triangulating the, the data to these points for all of our surveys. These is, these are the survey markers that we use when we're doing our local surveys for construction projects. Land surveyors tie into them when they're doing, uh, boundary surveys and property surveys. We're, we're updating the data to the new monumentation.
Can you just, can you describe the monumentation? Is that just the actual marker?
There's an actual marker out there. So, for reference, east of your place and then back south on Montana Avenue, go, it's not even a thousand feet. It's north of the railroad tracks and the east right of way. You'll see a couple of yellow, uh, what I call pipe ballers. They're painted yellow filled, filled with concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in that triangle shape of those, there's a stainless steel lid. If you flip the lid open, there's a marker inside that with about a five-foot steel rod down into the ground. And that's what people set up on and shoot.
Yep. I've seen that done actually in that location.
Yep.
So there's probably.
There's.
Lots of these around the county.
There's, I think there's forty-six independent ones that are strictly Humboldt Counties. Otherwise, there's shared ones with Cassou, Webster, uh, Pocahontas and Wright County.
And so it's more to correct the GPS coordinates of said markers, monument markers?
Right.
It's not, the, the markers are correct.
The markers are correct.
The, the GPS data needs to be updated.
Yep. Yeah, the GPS data.
I'd like to clarify what we're talking about because when you say monument, people might read this in the paper and think, gee, so they go into the cemetery and put new gravestones?
We've figured this over the years that it's been since we've done it, probably a pretty cheap fix.
Like two thousand dollars a year.
And something that we need to do in order to be, say, somewhat modern.
Yep. So what we're looking at as far as expenditures, uh, they'll, they'll do the, the reconnaissance, the, the top line item, the forty-four eighty-five.
Gives you an idea, huh? I'm sure you're worth it all, huh?
He's probably, we should go around and start surveying.
My knowledge, uh, no monuments have been damaged, so there is no replacement. Uh, nobody's called one in.
Nobody's hooked them with a ripper and yanked it out of the ground yet, huh?
What about?
Nobody's hooked them with a ripper and yanked it out of the ground.
I've had to put those concrete ballers around so that they're, uh, a little bit harder to accidentally pull.
Yeah.
But, uh, so we shouldn't have anything on E. F would be them coming in and actually doing the free, uh, triangulation, setting up the network in the county. Uh, they give us a little bit of a tax, or a little bit of a cost savings if we sign up now where they can tie us in with Cassou County doing the survey.
So they're, these are close?
Beans that they're.
In the area.
They'd be in the area and setting up for theirs. Uh, H, we're not gonna do. And I would be later on down the road. That would be a couple of years from now. It's showing twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
I told him, I'm out.
You made the motion, Sandy?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I'll say.
We have a motion in a second. Um, so I guess just for clarification, roughly what's the total then, Ben, with?
About thirty-five thousand.
About thirty-five and that's?
With about, uh, thirty of it this year and about five thousand next year.
All right. I think it's a good way to.
We all have to do it, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. So just for, how far are they with Alga or Cassou Counties? Are they?
They haven't started yet. Uh, their, their plan is to start towards the end of this month, beginning of next month.
So, will these guys be like, uh, like a survey crew? Uh, they're out?
Yep.
Out and about with pickups and?
Out with surveying.
Four-wheelers running around, I, I assume?
Yeah.
I don't, I, I, people wonder what's going on and all of a sudden, you know, like when, uh, Eric's spray team is out doing the.
Well, I, yeah, will they really physically, do they have to go, um?
They'll physically go out to each one of these.
Right, but don't they normally set up their, uh, like surveying equipment and double-check things or do they?
Yep. So, I mean, when they do it, they'll set up on one, shoot a couple, move the, the base station and back triangulate. Yeah, it's.
That's a lot of engineering talk.
The labor of the project.
Yeah. You probably won't see so many people out driving around because most of these are accessible from right-ofways and such.
You've got a team, but you might see their, their pickup sitting out.
Oh, you'll see that with the flashing lights and wonder what the heck are they doing? That's what they're doing.
All right. Now I just, little clarification.
Yep.
All right, your last.
The last item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a quote from Highway Truck for an FMR Retriever. Uh, this is a piece of equipment that goes on the front of a motor grader that hooks onto our existing Balderson Hitch lift group. Uh, it has two separate hydraulic lines that run back to our wintertime, uh, wing controls, which has a high-end piston that will lower down a, a set of reclaiming discs and this is how we can pull in shoulders like we have been doing with our mower tractors, but it's also a way that we can rubbleize our, uh, curb and gutter sections that we have on gravel roads versus just cutting with a blade and dragging that dirt and sod back and forth across the road. This would physically cut and chew it up.
Kind of drains it up a little bit more.
Right.
They have a good picture of it. Is that one favorite information? That's probably about the best picture on a motor grader.
Yeah, there should be, uh, you can see it on, I think, the second sheet as far as the retriever. Hamilton County's got two of these. Wright County's got one. Uh, when I looked into them two years ago, the, the closest supplier was a guy out of Montana, um, which is where the other counties have purchased theirs, but that's out in the Highway Truck. Here, I don't know, a couple, two, three weeks ago, they mentioned that they were starting to carry these guys' products. So we'll have a local supplier carrying, uh, for any of our maintenance or our issues. Price-wise, it's comparable to what I looked at back in nineteen. I think it was just under twenty thousand back then. It's twenty-three now. But with the cost of iron and everything going up, it's right in the realm of everything else.
So what do you expect? I mean, I, I know you don't have an exact figure, but just retrieving the rock that we can't get now, I mean, it's gonna save.
It, it's, I, I would say in two years, you'd have your money back with.
It passes with the maintainer.
It passes with the maintainer on paved roads pulling material back towards the roadway.
Well, isn't this particularly useful for the gravel road, uh, cutting shoulders like you've mentioned earlier?
Yep.
Where you're not physically mowerboarding that this gets it in then with the mowerboard, you move the material back with that, but it's a lot cleaner, it's probably quicker process.
It's, it's a cleaner process, yeah. I mean, running this on a, on a motor grader, you'd be able to rubbleize it on the front and use your wing to push the material back off to the shoulder. Uh, by doing that, you're essentially killing the grass.
You're doing what we did quite a bit of last year and it worked great except it was the timing. It was about the only time it rained all spring.
Right.
And that went back and forth across the road. This will help minimize that and get the shoulders cut. The reason that shoulders are cut is so the water drains off the road.
Yes.
And this will really make it a better process and a program to do that.
It should. I, I wanna see, I wanna see how this thing runs and potentially down the road, we buy two more so every shop's got one.
Well, I was gonna ask, are you gonna switch it from one to the other?
So we're gonna, we're planning on putting this one on, uh, equipment number sixty-three, which is a wintertime machine in.
Then you can, then you can just drive. Then you can move it around.
Yes, then you can just move it around to all the other shops.
Good, good, good thought process.
I think it's a good idea because I know the fact of cutting the shoulders on the roads for the drainage is a, is a maintenance item.
It's a big undertaking.
It is. And this will help in that program. Have you, you kinda mentioned, uh, not a lot of companies make these?
There's, I mean, there's about eight different suppliers that all carry some different form of these, whether it's a, a rear mount on a mower tractor, uh, one that goes on the motor grader like this. I mean, there's, they all basically do the same thing. The main reason that I was looking at this one is it's all in one unit, goes on the front of the motor grader, you're tapping it back off.
Thanks a lot.
Plus, when we're cutting shoulders, typically we're also running mowers. So the mowers would be utilized.
Yeah, the mowers aren't tied up.
And this, yeah. But is it, this is a good product. I mean, it's a.
Yeah, this is a ver- it looks like a great.
But heavy, as far as built-wise, heavy-duty stand-up to, because it's, it's a pretty rugged deal, especially when you put it on a motor grader. But picture-wise, it looks like it's built pretty darn good.
Pretty beefy.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a wonderful idea. Uh, I know a member of a year or two ago that we talked about it and now you're getting to it. So I would make the motion to approve that quote for the FMR Retriever for the motor grader.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. So, the, the FMR, is that the?
That's the brand.
I know, I'm just, what I'm after is that, that's the heavy, heavier one they make? I mean, this isn't the middle of the road, but.
No, this is, this is their heavy duty.
This is their duty.
Yep, that's exactly why I was getting at. We don't buy something, the third time you use it, the blades all fall off.
It's, yeah, the FMR is, is front mount retriever.
Perfect.
Yeah. And Highway Truck, uh.
At Fort Dodge.
So, and they will carry them and they will carry parts if needed.
They'll carry them. They'll do the initial setup and installation.
So if locals too, you're not dealing.
No, to me, like, there should be a lot of maintenance to it.
I don't think so.
Hopefully not.
It's not like you're gonna break.
They run theirs over east and it's been working pretty well for them.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. How long do they think?
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks?
Yep, that's what they could turn around in two to three weeks. So, I'll get ahold of them today and get that ball rolling.
Perfect.
Um, beyond that, we're, uh, we're getting some prices from, uh, tile contractors to run a tile down Sheldon Park Road. Uh, we talked a couple of weeks ago. We're gonna try and do that before we have Blacktop come in and do the repair, the permanent repair, so.
Okay.
Hopefully this tile down the middle will eliminate all future issues.
Get water away from the road bed. See if we can hold the, hold it for a little longer.
Beyond that, we're, we're hauling rock. Uh, we did a little bit of ditch digging. Plugging along. So just getting started hauling rock.
All right.
So, so we ain't gonna gain more snow then?
Yeah, easy.
If we do, we won't be out on.
We got weather melts.
Unless they dump like fifteen inches, we probably won't run on the whole road.
Well, if we did.
If the town's warm enough, it should melt.
Hopefully it'd just be one pass down the center to get somebody through there so we don't blade what we just put down. Hopefully, it'd just be one pass down the center to get somebody through there so we don't blade what we just put down.
Right, yeah. We've laid about six inches of ground, so...
And God forbid, we get that kind of smell this time of year. We'll all be mentally exhausted.
There's been all kinds of, yeah, I know, I know.
And I appreciate it.
We have so much stuff here, we're, we're not looking at any of this other equipment here, are we, just at the moment?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure you guys had everything.
We sure do. But just making sure we're not going to be talking about a packer roller next week.
No, no, maybe next year.
Okay. Nope, I think this is a good deal.
Well, the state has been doing it over in Wright County along the highway in its three-man band. They got the front guy leading, then the guy that's pulling it back, then the second guy's blading it back to the shoulder, then the packer come along, then the trail guys, kind of like...
Well, that's the state, though. They need to have something for all their...
They're driving the trucks, yeah.
Yeah, they got to have something for all their employees to do, so, and put a whole bunch of...
I didn't say that.
Oh, I did. But we said state, you're not the county.
The lunch wagon.
And you'll let us, uh, you'll, uh, give us an update on, this sounds like they're going to be using it here this...
Yeah, I'd like to come, take a look at it and watch the...
Yeah, I'll let, uh, I'll let you guys know when we get the thing installed and...
Shoulder cutting is going to work really well.
Perfect. All right, thank you, Sandy, Ben. Um, anything else on the agenda? I see we're down to the committee reports. Sandy, do you want to start? Okay, that was easy. Dave?
All I had on Tuesday was the VA burden claims. Uh, there it is.
That's it.
I didn't have any official meetings-wise last week either.
It was a quiet week, I didn't either.
Well, I had a CFR, um, Zoom meeting that lasted just short of the week. I mean, I think it was almost three hours by the time we... Well, we were, tried to do two months and they had a couple that were on vacation, so it was a long meeting. And so, that was, um, started at six and... Eight-thirty, that was Thursday, the thirty-first. That was my only... Uh, all right, do you have anything else, Trish? All right.
Second.
Let's, motion and a second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are out at nine.